Alright, if everyone could please take your seat, we're about to begin. Everyone, please take your seats. Alright, good evening, everyone.
Evening.
I'd like to bring out your council member, Matthew Eugene. And your mayor, Bill de Blasio. I'd like to invite up Corinne Jean to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Corinne. I'd like to thank our hosts for this evening, PS6 Principal Sharon Porter. And our co-sponsors for this evening, Community Board 9, Community Board 12, Community Board 14, Community Board 17, Kamba, The Flatbush Development Corporation, Kaki, and Kopo. Now, I'd like to invite Assembly Member Radnese Bishot up to give us a brief greeting.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Assembly Member Radnese Bishot, and welcome to the Flatbush District. It is an honor for all of us to be here together today to listen to our mighty, mighty Mayor Bill de Blasio. Um, I'm just gonna say a few words, but first I wanna recognize a few folks. I wanna say thank you to Matthew Eugene, who's the City Council of this district. I wanna give greetings to all of our police officers. Thank you for the hard work that you do. All the community boards in the House, thank you so much for being here. Let's give it up. Ms. Porter, thank you so much. Our superintendent, thank you so much from District 17. And all of our clergy members, thank you and welcome. Um, I just wanted to say that it's truly an honor to have witnessed such a fascinating mayor, like Mayor Bill de Blasio. As many of you know, when he decided to run for mayor of New York City, he had promised that he was gonna listen to all New Yorkers. He had promised that he was gonna address affordable housing, and that's what he's doing. He addressed, he said that he was gonna address, uh, universal pre-K. And as you know, as of today, we have not only four-year-olds going to school, but we also have three-year-olds going to school. He has addressed the income inequities, as well as the business inequities. And as the Minority and Women Business Enterprise Chair of the State Assembly, I've been working closely with my mayor on making sure that minorities and women who own businesses across the city of New York have their fair share in government contracts. And let me tell you, today, he had announced, and I know Commissioner Greg Bishop is here, and we wanna thank him, he had announced that there are ahead-of-the curve $7.8 billion has been issued and awarded to minority and women business enterprise contracts. Let's give the mayor a round of applause. And we talked about community policing and making sure that our community's safe, and he's gonna talk about it. I don't wanna take the fund away from him, but as you know, New York City is the safer, safest as it ever have been in its history. And we wanna thank him for the hard work that he's been doing with our police officers. And we wanna thank you in recognizing the hard work of our police officers. So there's so many issues, but the one issue that I have to talk about is immigrant. The immigrant population. Many of us in this room are from somewhere, okay? All of us, all of us are from somewhere. Exactly, we're all from somewhere. And he recognized, he recognized, and he embraces the tapestry of New York City. We are all from everywhere, somewhere. And that's why he's not like President Number 45, okay? He's saying, "No, we welcome immigrants here to stay here." That's why he's protecting New York City to make sure it continues to be a sanctuary city, so that all immigrants who've lived here, whose parents and children have gone to school and worked, continues to live here, who helped build New York City. And when we started this program, he made sure that he had translators in Spanish and Haitian Creole. So we gotta thank our mayor for that. Let's give him a... And lastly, I just wanna say that, thank you, we are in Little Haiti. So we wanna thank Mayor de Blasio for all that you do. Thank you for being such a great friend. Thank you for inviting all of us. Your staff is wonderful. All your commissioners are wonderful. Let's give them a round of applause. And we love you, we thank you, and for your wife for what she has been doing with the mental health, okay? Mental health is a crisis. We wanna thank the First Lady for all that she do. Thank you so much, and welcome.
Thank you, Assembly Member Bishot. Now, I'd like to bring up your council member, Dr. Matthew Eugene.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Carneyon. Thank you very much. Before I start speaking, let me say something. I brought the mayor last year, the first time. Our district is the best district in New York City. And the mayors know that. He loved the district, that the reason he came back, he came back again. Let me say to each one and all of you, thank you so very much for coming today together to welcome our mayor, the mayor of the city of New York, an outstanding citizen, leader. And but before I say that, I gotta say to each one of you, thank you very much, and I want to welcome you, not only on behalf of my district, on behalf of all the constituents, and on behalf of the great city of New York, but I want to say thank you also for everything each one of you have been doing for the community. When I look at the audience, I see so many leaders, so many outstanding citizens, who every single day do everything possible to empower this community. Because you know that, the community belong to all of us. The mayor has been doing everything possible to improve the quality of life of New Yorkers. But we know that, that could have been possible without the contribution of so many of you here. For that, I say thank you very much. Thank you so much. You know, being the mayor of New York City, I don't think is an easy job. It's not easy. Everything that I'm looking, you know, in the TV, and I, every time that I meet with the mayor, I say, "Oh my God, this guy, he gotta got a big shoulder." So anyway, if I find the time for me to schedule to come over here, to speak with you, to hear from you, the issues that are important for you, and other for him, to go back to City Hall, to make sure that he does everything possible to address those issues. Let's give the mayor a big round of applause for that. But the mayor also understands that no man is an island. No man is an island. He will take all of you to work together with him to better New York City, to improve the quality of life, that the reason he brought with him so many commissioners and assistant commissioners, and so many of his staff, and other for them, and they are very qualified people. They know how to address issues, to help him give you the right answers to your issues and to your question. And let me say that. The mayor understands clearly that the greatness of New York City comes from the diversity of this city. From our diversity. Because New York City is a great city, is the best city in the world, I'm saying that because I know what I'm talking about. I had the privilege to travel to Europe, to Mexico, to everywhere. And I'm telling you honestly, this is the best one, New York City. This is the best one. And New York City is the best city because of each one of you. And each one of us, we can trace our origin to one of several countries. It doesn't matter if you are the first or second generation. Like everybody, we come over here like everybody, like everybody. And the mayor understand that, and that the reason the mayor has been fighting and walking together with the city council to make sure that everyone, regardless of your ethnicity, regardless of where you were born, regardless of your gender, your affiliation, your service, and also, New York City is a place for each one of us and all of us to call home. And we are so proud to be New Yorkers. Yes or no? So pride, so pride. But I want to take the opportunity also to say that, I know what I'm talking about. The mayor knows also that children, they are the future of this nation, the future of the society. And right after being elected, what he did, he makes sure that all the children in New York City get access to pre-K. Because he knows that this is the best investment that we as a society we can do, the investment in our children. He is having a big round of applause for that also. What about education? There is nothing a human being can do without education. Children, adults, education is the best tool for all of us to open all the doors to our success. And the mayor knows that. He announced recently, together with the speaker, $125 million for the school in New York City. And you can ask our principal, Ms. Porter, the importance of this funding, because the principals, they need the funding to make sure that they have the resources for the teachers to provide the best education to our children. Let me take the opportunity also to thank Principal Porter for giving us the opportunity, giving me the opportunity to bring the mayor, for the second time, to this great school, PS6. As I said before, no man is an island. And I want to take the opportunity also to thank all the brave men and women in blue and uniform, who every single day leaving their houses, put their life in danger some of the time, and most of the time, to save us, to protect us. Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much. Because honestly, without you guys, the doctor wouldn't be able to go to the hospital to save life. Impossible. That would be impossible. Without you, the teachers wouldn't be able to go to school to educate our children. And without of you, we elected the official, the man, myself, and my colleagues, we won't be able to go to our job, to do everything that we can do to improve the quality of life. Let's give our police officer, please, a big round of applause. And also to our firefighters and all of you here, I know every single day you do everything that you can do, and your respect is feel to be part of the big family, the big community of New York's, the hard-working people who make New York City great. And I want to take the opportunity now to commend also, and to recognize, one of our leaders. She has served the community before me. And you know her, she doesn't need any introduction. She was the city council member before me, and she did a wonderful job for this district, that the reason why I can continue to follow her step. Let's give a big round of applause, please, to the former council member, Dr. Una Clark. Let me tell you something about it. I don't know. I don't know where they find the energy. She gotta give you the secret. Because I cannot believe that. She's everywhere, she never tired. So to all of you, my brothers and sisters, thank you very much for being here. And it is a pleasure and an honor to host this public forum. And I know this is a good opportunity for many of you to pose your question, to ask the mayor the question that you believe are very important for you, and to raise the issues that you believe that the mayor should work to resolve. And I know that the mayor will do everything possible. And we elected officials, we know that. We have an awesome and noble job to do everything that we can do to improve the quality of life of the people who have elected us. But we have been doing so much already. We have accomplished so much, but we do know that much more remain to be done. We have to continue to do more. And it will happen when all of us come together to work with the mayor and to make sure that our dream for the city of New York become reality. Please, join me to welcome the mayor of New York City, your mayor, the honorable Bill de Blasio.
Thank you. Well, everyone, I wanna thank you. First thing I wanna say to you, most important, by being here tonight, everyone makes a statement of commitment to the community. Uh, I know how hard New Yorkers work. There's no place on earth where people work harder. Everyone here's had a long day. And yet, you are here to put in more time on behalf of the community. And that is a beautiful example of democracy, the best kind of democracy, grassroots democracy. So I ask you, do me a favor, give your neighbor a round of applause. Now, before I talk about your council member, I'm gonna talk about also a couple of updates, and then we're gonna open it up to as many questions as we can get to this evening. I'm looking forward to that. A special thank you to Assembly Member Radnese Bishot. I very much appreciate all you said, but I even more appreciate what you do for us in Albany. Radnese has been fantastic. And with her strong efforts, we have been able to do more to support people who come here to contribute to New York City, and come here as immigrants because of your excellent efforts in Albany, and because of your great efforts, we've been able to reach more minority and women-owned businesses and give them an opportunity to thrive as well. So thank you, Assembly Member, for all you have done. Special thank you to my appointee to the Board of the City University, Una Clark. Thank you so much for all you do. I get a lot of complaints that she's very shy, and she never speaks up, and no one knows what her true opinions are. I get a lot of that. No one believes me. Now, I wanna say very quickly, Councilmember Matthew Eugene is someone I came to know many, many years ago, before I was elected to anything, before he was elected to anything. And what I wanna emphasize to you is that I have rarely known anyone in public life who cared more about young people. He was devoting a lot of his time and energy to supporting our young people long before he was elected official. This is something he believes in. He believes in uplifting and supporting our young people and getting them the training they need and the inspiration they need. And when he speaks about supporting communities of people all over this district and all over the city who are new to our country, but who do so much for our country, he knows what he's talking about because he's an example himself, someone who came here and contributed so much. So let's thank Dr. Matthew Eugene for all he does. I'm gonna give you a few quick updates, very quick. First, everyone this evening has been praising and thanking the leaders we have here and the members of NYPD, and I wanna thank them by giving you a fact that, I'm gonna use a phrase from when I was growing up, this will blow your mind, okay? Anyone who's here in the 60s and 70s knows that phrase. So, in 2017, because of the work of the men and women of the NYPD, in 2017, in this city of now 8.6 million people, we had the fewest homicides since the early 1950s in this city. There are a lot of people walking around alive today because of what the NYPD has achieved in the last few years. And I wanna make it vivid, particularly for my fellow Brooklynites. The last time we had this few murders in New York City, the Dodgers were playing at Ebbets Field. That is a factual statement. So, what has been achieved is nothing short of miraculous. Now, to echo what Matthew Eugene said, the NYPD needs us to be partners to be effective. That's the whole idea of neighborhood policing, where the police are drawing closer to the community and building deeper relationships than ever before, but it also depends on community members stepping forward in partnership and friendship with police so we can all be safe, and so we can protect each other. And it's working. A lot of you know about neighborhood policing, about the NCO initiative, which is in almost all the precincts in this district. One more is about to get it. And what a difference that's making. But I wanna brag on the 70 precinct in particular, where we are right now. This should also blow your mind. Year-to-date, this point this year versus the same point last year, major crimes in this precinct are down 12%. Isn't that amazing? So, I'm just gonna go through a couple of quick issues so you hear it, but that's one example of real progress we should be proud of. Another one you heard mentioned is pre-K. And this is one, whenever anyone tells you something is impossible, you shouldn't believe them to begin with, but you can certainly point to the example of pre-K as something that we were told more times than I could count, it wasn't possible. The year I took office, there were 20,000 kids in New York City getting full-day pre-K. Today, there are 70,000 kids getting full-day pre-K. Now, some districts particularly benefited because they had been left behind in the past. And this one is one of those districts that didn't get their fair share in the past. But when you make something universal, then you quickly see real progress. This council district has eight times more full-day pre-K seats than it did just four years ago. And in the next few years, we will make 3K universal in this city. So every three-year-old, I want everyone to fully understand what's coming in the next few years. Every three-year-old will be eligible for full-day, quality, early childhood education for free. You like the sound of that? I want everyone to just take in for a moment what it means that this city we love so much is gonna lead the whole nation in giving our children a strong start. But what I love about it, it's not only high-quality, and it's about excellence, and it's about really tapping into the extraordinary potential of our young people, but think about this, 'cause we want a society that's fair to everyone. Imagine every child at the same starting line. Not some getting opportunity and others being left behind, or some who have a family can afford something, but others don't. Every child in the entire city, at the age of three, at the age of four, getting that strong start so they can be all they are capable of being. That is the city we are creating here. Now, sometimes I like to survey the room, so I'm gonna do that right now. I'm gonna ask you a question. Do you believe, I'm going to another topic on education, after-school, do you believe that after-school is free for middle-school kids in this city? Do you believe after-school is free for middle-school kids? If you do, raise your hand. Okay, I see some people with a hand up. I see some people halfway up. A lot of people not having their hand up. This is one of the best-kept secrets, and we have to do a better job getting it out. But I'm asking everyone here, everyone here is very involved in the community. I want you to be my emissaries. Every middle-school child, 6th, 7th, 8th grade, now qualifies for free after-school in New York City. I wanna be clear, it does not mean it's always in their same school building, but it is in their neighborhood. And it's free. Now, if you have a child who's going into 6th, 7th, or 8th grade starting in September, or you know a family who does, this is a great opportunity. The kids get tutoring, they get cultural programs, they get recreation. It's usually about three hours after-school. They're in a safe place where they continue to learn and grow. Will you please help me spread the word about that all over the community? I also want you to know, as a result of that initiative, the number of after-school seats in this community has doubled in the last four years. Now, I'm gonna turn quickly to the issue, probably the one that Matthew and I hear the most from our constituents. I'm gonna say it very simply. They once said the rent is too damn high, remember that? Okay. It costs too much to live in New York City. As my official statement as mayor, it costs too much. Matthew and I and Radnese, we didn't create the reality. We didn't say that because of the rules of the free enterprise system, you can charge whatever you can get away with in rent. This is the world we have received, but it's our job to find a way to fix it and make it fairer in every way we can. Which is why, for the rents that my city government... and make it fairer in every way we can, which is why, for the rents that my city government helps to regulate with the Rent Guidelines Board, we had two years where there was a rent freeze in New York City for those apartments. We had years where the rent was kept very low. That's part of addressing the problem. Another part of addressing the problem is taking on the unscrupulous landlords who try to evict people illegally, who harass tenants, who try and force them out by not giving them heat or hot water or repairs. I want to say the City Council's been outstanding in passing laws to stop this kind of harassment and to support New Yorkers getting help if they are confronted with a problem. Now, here is another fact that a lot of people don't know, and again, thanks to Dr. Matthew Eugene and the City Council. Now, in New York City, if you are threatened with illegal eviction or you are harassed, you get legal assistance for free to take on your landlord. And this is an initiative that is called the Right to Council Law. Council passed it. I signed it. And it will be phased in over the next few years, but it means that anyone who is faced with illegal eviction and makes less than $50,000 a year will get a lawyer assigned to them to go to court. Anyone who makes more than $50,000 will still get free legal support and assistance. And our goal is to reduce radically the number of evictions. One of the best ways to protect affordable housing is to protect people who have it already from being thrown out of it. Since we started this, we have already, and this has just begun, we already have a 27% decrease in evictions in New York City. But the last piece of the equation in terms of housing is we got to build affordable housing, and we got to protect the affordable housing we have already. In this council district, we have 400 apartments already. And when I say apartment, that usually means someplace that three or four people live. So we have 400 apartments already that are either new affordable housing or they've been subsidized to be kept affordable. We have another 400 coming. And I am announcing tonight, Dr. Eugene, another 300 apartments on top of that will be preserved here in the community, meaning they'll be subsidized so the families in them can stay in the community. That is already, as of this point, 1,100 apartments in this council district. That's enough for about 4,000 or more people who now will know that they can stay here and afford the rent. And we've got a lot more to do, but that's a great start. Now, for the seniors who rent apartments, here's a number that we should all be a little surprised by. In this city council district, we believe there are 3,500 senior households that right now could get a rent freeze. 3,500 senior households who qualify for a rent freeze, not just for this year, but on an ongoing basis. Seniors who therefore would have the assurance that their rent would not go up. This rent freeze initiative was called the SCREE program. We call it the Rent Freeze Program because we want to make clearer what it actually does for people. A typical senior in this district would benefit to the tune of about $250 a month in savings. That is real money that would make a real difference in a senior's life. But a lot of people, as I mentioned, thousands of seniors in this district don't even know they qualify. So I'm announcing we're going to do an outreach effort in July. We're going to blitz all over this district to let seniors know that they can save money, they can get a rent freeze, and they can afford to live here. Couple last points. In terms of supporting our fellow New Yorkers who are immigrants, yes, we all are from somewhere. That was your Yogi Bear moment right there. So we now provide free legal assistance to our fellow New Yorkers who are immigrants to make sure people are not defrauded, to make sure people get support. God forbid, anyone is faced with deportation, they can get help. City Council's been very generous about that focus. In this city council district in just the last couple of years, almost 2,500 immigrants have gotten free legal help, just in this district, just in the last couple of years. It's making a big difference. And I want to emphasize, anyone who needs that help just needs to call 311. And you can get that help, or anybody in your family, any friends can get that help. Finally, two last things. We talked before, again, thanks to Rodnys and thanks to Matthew for their extraordinary support of making sure there is opportunity for all. When we talk about MWBEs, that's an acronym we hear thrown around, and it stands for Minority and Women-Owned Business. But really, or enterprise, I should say, MWB, really what it should boil down to is making sure there is fairness. It is part of addressing our history. We're saying, it's not a news flash to anyone in this room, for a long time, women didn't get a fair shake in our economy. For a long time, people of color didn't get a fair shake in our economy. We are simply trying to make sure that everyone has economic opportunity. And the government has a huge role to play because we have a vast amount of resources. We need a lot. We have to constantly buy things and make sure we can provide all the services to people in the city so government can be a force for fairness and equality. You heard the overall numbers, but I want to make it very specific to this district because this city of New York now has a 30% goal, meaning for all of our contracting and purchasing, that 30% will ultimately go to women and minority enterprises. That's real money. In this district alone, in just the last two years, that means $10 million has gone into this district to small businesses in this district. That's putting money into people's pockets who run those businesses. Guess what they do? They turn around, hire community residents, and that makes a huge difference. But there are a lot of companies and small businesses here in this community that could qualify, but you need to be certified to do it. So I want, we'll talk about, I'm sure in the course of the evening, anyone who wants to get those opportunities, who has a small business, make sure you certify because there's really extraordinary opportunities that will allow you to contribute even more to the community. Finally, there are so many things that make this city great, but we know it's a very busy place, a very crowded place. And for all of us, one of our refuges is our parks. We depend on our parks, particularly for our kids, but all of us need our parks for our quality of life. And the council member has been adamant about contributing towards our parks, and he's also pushed me to contribute more to the parks. So one of the things we announced recently, $2.2 million to renovate Wingate Park. And we want to want to thank the council member and Borough President Adams, and that work will start in the spring. So it's coming soon. So with that, I want to say just one more thing. I failed to appreciate and thank the members of my administration who are here. We talked about the great leaders of NYPD, but I want to also point out all of these leaders of city agencies. So I always say, with a town hall meeting, we're going to go, we're going to take questions until, let's say, about 8:45 tonight. We'll get a lot of questions in. But then you have a bonus round because after that, all these folks are right here. And they represent all the agencies that have a big impact on your life, and you just have to come up and talk to them. And if you tried to meet with all these people, it might take weeks to get an appointment. You'd have to go to Manhattan. All, they're just right here. They're sitting right here. There is no middle person. You do not have to go through layers of bureaucracy. They're right here. Now, I always say at a town hall meeting, this is my 54th town hall meeting, and I always say that a lot of you, I'm sure you're thinking, well, wait a minute, these hard-working people have been working all day. Is it really right to keep them even later to address your concerns? Well, I want you to know, yes, it is. Yes, it is. Because they are such devoted public servants, they will stay here all night if you want them to. Let's give them a round of applause. Dr. Eugene will be our moderator. I just want to do one quick point on ground rules, too. Help each other out. Everyone's got something they want to raise. Let's get to the most people we can. So please ask one question or raise one concern. Try and do it as quickly as you can, okay, so that we can give you an answer, and then we can get as many people to participate as possible. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You can do better than that. You are from 48th District. Give a big round of applause to our mayor, the honorable Bill de Blasio. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Before we start the question, I would be remiss if I don't take the opportunity to thank very special people who are doing a wonderful job in the 48th District. Because every time that you see me doing something, you give me the credit, I look good, it is because of my staff. Put your hands together, please, for the people who are working with me who make this possible. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. And I want also to take the opportunity to thank our clergy members, our clergy leaders, every single day, they do so much for the community. They deserve, they are our partners.
All right.
Our partners. They deserve a big round of applause also. Put your hands together for them, please. So now, let's start calling people.
And we're going to keep rotating around the room so everyone knows.
Community District 14, Mr. Alvin.
Okay, enough. The microphone will come to everyone when they're called on.
Thank you very much. You stand up?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor de Blasio.
Good to see you.
Welcome to the Community District 14, as well as the 40th Council District. I'm going to say something that's not particularly sexy, the issue, but it's a difficult one. And it's a thank you by start. And that is, we're thanking your office for taking an interest in resolving the jurisdictional issues at Newkirk Plaza, which, as you know, the MTA has a role in, the city has a role in, several city agencies, and we're very grateful. And it'll help us work with the agencies to resolve sanitation issues and street activity permit issues because right now, it's been ambiguous, as you know. So it's not a sexy issue, but we're very grateful.
An important one.
We're also very appreciative of the aid that the Department of Sanitation has given us to focus on that issue. And we're grateful for Penny Ringel for bringing it to your attention.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, very, thank you for raising it. And this is my simple statement. What's going on at Newkirk Plaza, it's not been fair to the community that this has been so, so long without resolution. People deserve for it to be kept properly and to be clean. Here's what I pledge. There's still a few issues we have to work through with the MTA, but by this summer, we will resolve these issues so people know that Newkirk Plaza will be cleaned and will be kept properly for the community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies over there, please.
Hi. I have a small business across the street for years, and I need a proper ID. I went to Broadway. They told me I cannot get a proper ID because I wasn't in the army. So how can I, you know, move forward to get a proper ID?
Okay.
Because two weeks ago, the police came to me, and, you know, I showed them the liquor ID that I have, but that wasn't a proper ID. So how can I go about to get a good ID?
And you're saying an ID related to your business?
Yeah, to the business.
What kind of business again?
I sell like costume like these and pocketbooks.
Okay. So what we'll do, our Small Business Services Commissioner is here, Greg Bishop. He will follow up?
He knows me very well.
Okay, he's going to make sure. There you go. It's all good. It's all good. Now, Greg, 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 I have to, wait a sec, wait a sec, everyone. Hold on. Greg, what exact small business services are you providing? Okay. It's okay, okay. Okay. Next one.
Miss over there. The microphone, please. Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I live in this neighborhood. I have a burning question, very burning. Why is it that when someone moves out of an apartment?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, please. Wait for the mayor.
Okay, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Okay. Why is it that when someone moves out of an apartment, the landlord chops the apartment up, puts it into pieces, and rents a lot of money? Why I'm making this statement is because we all use gas. They take in the kitchen from where it is and put it in the bedroom, cut up the bedroom, cut up the bathroom. And if there's a fire, where is that line? I'm very concerned about it because a year ago, I had to jump through my window with my kids. It wasn't easy.
Yeah.
And I had no compensation after that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay? So I need that question very much to be handled.
Yes, I appreciate it very much. So very quickly, we got a couple of different points that come into this. So first of all, I'm so sorry you had to go through that. And you're making a really important point about the importance of protecting people first. Because again, most landlords, I want to be fair, most landlords, I think, do their job appropriately legally. The unscrupulous ones do things that put people in harm's way. So anybody who knows of something they think is an unsafe condition, we need that reported to 311. If it's an immediate urgent emergency, to 911. But if it's an ongoing situation, to 311, so we can get inspectors out there, whether it's Buildings Department, Fire Department, to address the problem. That is about your immediate issue. And we have my colleague from the Buildings Department will speak to it for just a second. But I also want to say, we need to, in terms of protecting our housing going forward. What the City Council did was really important because they put in more rules to protect against the kind of, I mentioned, the harassment. And sometimes landlords have used construction as a way to force people out. So now there are more laws to help stop that. But we also need stronger rent laws in Albany to protect the affordable housing we have. Part of what is going on is landlords are doing some of these unscrupulous things because they know at a certain point, they can take that apartment, and it's no longer affordable, it's no longer regulated, they can get market rent. We want to strengthen the rent laws. We have a big opportunity next year. All of rent regulation and rent control, all that rent stabilization is up for a vote in Albany next year. I think we're going to have a very different reality in Albany next year. I think we're going to see the state senate change, and that's going to be an opportunity to get more support for tenants. So that vote is also going to have a lot to say with protecting the affordable housing we have. And I want to really alert people to how important that is. Now, Department of Buildings, go ahead, Commissioner.
Sure. A landlord who wants to do the right thing would pull the permits and get the licensed professionals to come out there, plumbers and electricians to do the right work. And those permits are posted on our website and available for everyone to see. So if you have a specific issue in your building, we're happy to take the address and the apartment number.
Right. No, we got that. And thank you. But if there is any specific you want to report, the Commissioner will be right over here. Thank you. Very good.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. With your permission, before I move to the next question, I want to recognize one of my former colleagues in the City Council. She has been a wonderful council member. We have with us, council member, former council member, Annabelle Palmer. Would you please, sidebar, please? Thank you for coming. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Alvin.
Alvin. Where's Al?
Who is that? Alvin is here?
I don't see him yet. We don't see him yet. Is he here?
No.
Okay, keep going.
All right. Thank you very much. So, miss, please. Yes, come here.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is a pleasure to finally meet you. Oh, God, what a pleasure.
Thank you.
And, okay, my question is, what are you planning on doing to get rid of the gun on the street?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. Such an important issue. So, look, the, I told you the good news, which is that crime is down. It's so extraordinary how far down crime is compared to where it was. But that doesn't mean we don't have more work to do. There's still way too many guns out there. Everyone understands that. That's a problem all over this country. In fact, one of the biggest problems facing NYPD is the illegal weapons that come from other parts of the country into New York City. So I will start, and Chief may want to add in, where's Chief? There he is. NYPD has done an extraordinary job of increasing gun seizures. And I really want you to know how extraordinary this is. And it's important to put in perspective. A lot of people here, I think, know the facts. We have reduced a lot of the interactions between the police and the community. We have reduced a lot of the interactions between the police and the community. Everyone remembers there was a broken and unconstitutional policy of stop and frisk. We did away with that policy. There's been a lot less use of arrest. In fact, in 2017, 100,000 fewer arrests than in 2013. But crime has gone down at the same time, in part because NYPD has focused, it's called pinpoint policing, on the most violent people, on the gangs, on folks involved with guns. And they're having more and more success getting guns off the street, and more and more success with gang takedowns. So I'm setting the stage for Chief to speak to this, but there's a lot of guns, but I think NYPD is doing a better job than ever before getting at them. Go ahead, Chief.
Actually, the mayor hit on a few, a lot of points. Number one is the interdiction. We're doing a lot with interdiction on guns coming up out of the South. Being South Carolina, Georgia, a lot of the guns come up straight, straight on Highway 95, and they come into the city. So we're trying to cut them off that way. And the second point the mayor made is gangs. You know, the guns are a big problem, but people actually picking one up and using them is even a bigger problem. In Brooklyn South alone, there's probably 65 gangs. Brooklyn North, another 85 gangs. And when they come together, different forces facing each other, like they often do, whether it's at a club, at a party, at a block party, wherever they come together, that's where the problems arise. So we're trying to use our NCOs, our neighborhood coordinating offices, to keep track of some of the gangs that exist, and we're using our gang units to keep track of other gangs, so that every commanding officer has a clear picture of the gangs that are operating within his precinct. And, you know, we monitor social media, we, you know, we do our best to stay on top of where they're meeting, where they're going to party tonight, because we know that those places breed a lot of trouble to the community.
Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you. Miss?
Hello, Mayor. How are you? Thank you for what you do. I bring you greetings from Brooklyn South. Quick question. I'm going to kiss. Keep it simple, sweetie.
All right.
I want a status check from you. Where are the air conditioners for our school?
Yep.
When is the name change for Gifted and Talented is going to take place? Because it's undermining the 99% of students.
Okay, so, you, so you're very kind. You said, "Keep it simple, sweetie." Because there's another, there's another version of that, right? So I like that. That's the peaceful version. I'm going to answer the question, but with a reminder to the whole room. That was two questions. I'm going to ask everyone, no, it was two questions, because you asked about the air conditioners and the gifted and talented. So, I love you, but everyone needs to ask one, so we can get to the most people possible. Okay? Air conditioners it is. So, air conditioners, in the next four years, every, every New York City classroom that does not have air conditioning will have it. So we've done about a year's already. We've got four more years to go, but we're trying to go as fast as we can. But by the end of that time, literally every classroom will have air conditioning all over the city. If you have specifics, and school construction is here? Yes. Do you have a specific that you're asking about? Which one?
Uh, this ECC on Flatland, District 22.
Oh, okay, from another district. Ooh. Okay. You're gonna, you can get, you have an answer offhand, or you want to let her know?
I don't have that school offhand, but I will follow up with you.
Okay, you follow up with her. She'll give you the schedule. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Miss over there?
Yeah, we're going to keep going around.
Yes.
Matthew. Matthew, don't forget all these people.
After this one.
After this one.
After this one.
We won't forget you.
I won't forget you. Thank you for your cooperation anyway. Collaboration.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Vivian Morgan, and I want to first thank the mayor and thank Matthew Eugene for the allocation to Wingate Park. I'm the director of Friends of Wingate Park, and Matthew Eugene has been working very hard to help with the renovations, and I must say thank you. Now, what I want to, question I want to ask is about the schools and about the computers. We need more computers in the school for the students, because basically, what I'm thinking is that we're like 20 years behind when it comes to all child should have a computer on their desk. So how are we going to address that issue?
Okay. So let me, let me tell you, I was trying to see if we had the exact facts on timeline, but let me tell you what I do know, and we'll get you the rest of the answer. So we have a very exciting thing happen in our schools called Computer Science for All. And this is an initiative that is bringing in tens of millions of dollars of private money. We're matching it with city money. And the idea is that we are going to teach computer science throughout all the grade levels, both as a direct subject, but also we're going to combine it into the math curriculum, for example, the social studies curriculum, you name it. So to do that, obviously, it is about training a lot of our teachers to be able to provide that guidance to young people, but it's also about getting the technology into the schools. So you're asking a great question, and I, at Town Hall meeting, I always try and be honest. I don't know the exact schedule for how we're going to build out the computer presence, the technology itself in the schools. I know we are hoping for some state money to do that. There was a big bond act voted on a few years ago, and that's hopefully going to be part of paying for that. But I need to get you an exact answer. Who from my team is going to follow up? Who from my team? Come on, someone from my team? I gotta, I gotta see someone rush over quickly. I don't see anyone rushing over. There's someone rushing over. Very good. You, right there. He's going to follow up with you, get your information, and we're going to get you that answer. Thank you.
Thank you. We got to go this side now. We got to make it fair. All right. Marazmi.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm sorry I have to, I'm running a little late, because I have to go to break the fast.
Are they good? Oh.
So my question real quickly is, I'm so glad you're talking about the housing and the initiatives that you're working, you want the seniors and so forth, but my problem is this, and this is an issue that I'm seeing. Many developers are coming into our communities and picking up space, which as, me as a CBO cannot afford anymore. And I cannot help to assist to even try to build anything, any affordable housing. Is there any initiative that you could come up with to assist CBOs who've been existing like me for 18 years?
Yes.
In the community, serving 15,000 people annually?
Yep.
How we can assist them?
First of all, thanks for your great work. I've known it for a long time. We appreciate it. And do I say Ramadan Mubarak? Is that right?
Thank you.
Did I get it right? Okay. Commissioner will speak to this, but I just want to frame it real quickly. A lot of what we have done recently is the creation of affordable housing with community-based organizations as sponsors, but we also have had some developments where we create affordable housing and also create community space to be headquarters or facilities that community-based organizations can locate in. The Caton Market, Flatbush Caton Market's a great example, where nonprofits are getting space in that development that will be their permanent home. So it could be either to help us sponsor the creation of affordable housing, or to get a location within it. Deputy Commissioner, how should Mo follow up on that?
Well, I also want to say that we have a new, new program in our Housing New York Plan called Neighborhood Pillars, which is going to allocate $275 million.
Neighborhood Pillars?
Neighborhood Pillars is going to allocate almost $300 million to nonprofit organizations to acquire or preserve affordable housing in New York City. So that's a huge investment, I think, in exactly the kind of thing you're talking about. We have, okay, we want community-based organizations, and we want nonprofit organizations who, who have investments in our communities to have the opportunity to actually acquire and preserve buildings, not just for-profit developers, not just nonprofit developers, but actual nonprofit organizations. So a huge investment's going to be made in bolstering that part of what we're doing to create and preserve more affordable housing.
Pastor Lee?
Good evening. Thank you.
I like that suit, brother. That's, that's a fashion statement right there.
Amen. Let the church say amen.
Amen.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Matthew Eugene. My name is Reverend Terry Lee, and certainly, I just have a question, but just as you mentioned about the housing, and my church was set on fire by arsonists, and I didn't get no help, and I feel like I was dumped, and the city didn't help me. But the question I have, the immigrants that we have been working in the community, for many years, we have been engaging with the NYPD, strengthening police and relation, police and community relation over the years.
Yes.
But now there's a sense of fear, where immigrants who are victims are afraid of even coming to the police. Immigrants are afraid when they see something, they don't want to say nothing.
Yeah.
For 20 years, we have been going to Washington to even pray, and this year, immigrants refuse even to go to pray for America. What is your plan, and how can we better give the accurate information to the immigrants' community to eliminate the high level of fear factor?
Yes.
And so we can better serve the community?
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you very much. So, Reverend, first of all, I've seen the good work that you are doing to help bring police and community together. I want to thank you for that. I really appreciate and been impressed by it. I'm troubled by the statement you made about what happened after the arson at the church. I'm very sorry to hear not only that it happened, but that you don't feel the city was supportive enough. I want to make sure if there's anything we can do to address that now. We should. Is Marco Carion here? Is he still in the room, or Tahira, is Tahira Moore here? I hear Tahira. Okay, Tahira, will you follow up with Reverend about what happened with the church, and if there's anything we can do to be supportive, please? Because I, again, I know his good work, and I want to be supportive in any way we can. To your question, and let's thank him for all he's done. To your question, I want to say, I agree with you that there are folks who, not only a lot of people living in fear, because of the atmosphere in the country right now, but some so much so that they do not even feel they can go forward to the police if they've been a victim of crime, for example. But I want to say many more, I believe, from everything we've seen. And Chief, you'll, you'll tell me if I'm missing anything on this. But everything I've seen so far is that despite the dynamics that we've seen the last couple of years, the vast majority of immigrant New Yorkers are still going forward to the NYPD and engaging the NYPD. Hold on, Tahira, don't interrupt in the middle of saying this to the Reverend. I know you're eager. I know you want to help. Okay, so they still come forward NYPD, because remember, it's been 30 years or more that the NYPD has not asked documentation status. And we will not ask documentation status. That's a really clear rule. So I think the fear is there, but I still think the vast majority of immigrant New Yorkers know that they can go safely to NYPD, they can say if they've been a victim of crime, they will get support, or if they've been a witness to a crime. We need people to. We need to, because it's how we stay safe. But in terms of addressing the bigger picture, and I think immigrants all over the country are standing up now and demanding change and demanding respect. I think we see in elections already all over the country, some real change starting to happen. I think most Americans, in fact, the survey data on this is very, very clear. The public polling's very clear. Most Americans want to see a comprehensive immigration reform. They want to see people who are here have a pathway to citizenship. Overwhelming majority of Americans, by the way, Democrat, Republican, and Independent, believe the Dreamers should be allowed to stay. So that's what the American people think. So I think we will get that bigger change in the next few years, but in the meantime, I need everyone here to remind any immigrant who feels fearful that they will be supported, and they can feel confident going to NYPD, and their identity will be protected. Thank you.
Okay. If I can, I'd just like to add to that. When President Trump first took office, all the commanding officers, they visited local churches, and they, this topic came up quite often at the local churches, and it came up at a lot of the community meetings. If you feel we have to do that again, we will gladly do that. But as the mayor says, the policy of NYPD hasn't changed, not in one bit. There are no joint operations with ICE or anything like that. So the immigrant community can feel quite free about, you know, being involved with the NYPD.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to amplify the point. Chief Mayor, I thought it was a very good invitation to any houses of worship that would like to have NYPD leaders come, or NCOs come and talk about how the NYPD works with everyone, including all immigrant communities. If you think that would be a helpful thing, the invitation is there, and we thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you. One more question over here, and after that, we're going to decide. Is that okay? One more question. All right. Miss, and after that, I get back to you.
My name is Reverend Marie Dumay. I'm Marie Dumay. I don't understand why everybody's leaving Brooklyn, because they cannot afford rent anymore. I lost my church due to lack of money, but the landlord, the new landlord, raised the rent so high, and right now, we cannot find a place to worship. I've been going from place to place to houses every day, every services. Can the city help?
Well, I appreciate the question. Look, now, this gets a little bit into the United States Constitution. So let's have a little civics lesson here. We work, and I want to say, my administration is very, very comfortable working with the faith community to achieve a lot of things in common. We have a very active partnership with houses of worship of all denominations and backgrounds, and that's been part of our pre-K initiative, part of our after-school, all sorts of things. But if you're literally talking about a house of worship needing worship space, that's something honestly, government cannot directly get involved in. We can get involved in the other things that churches and other houses of worship do, if they're involved in education, social services, things like that, affordable housing, but we can't work specifically on finding a worship space because of the separation of church and state. So that's the honest answer. If it's anything else that a church you're affiliated with wants to work on the city with, our door is wide open, but that, that one is a problem for us.
Mr. Bonapss? Miss? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor, for coming to our community. My name is Margaret Chavness. I'm a director at a Tier Two Domestic Violence Shelter with Urban Resource Institute. For the past year, it's been very hard transitioning families into permanent home. The first two years, we transitioned 31 out of 27 families, and the year after, it was 29 out of 27, but this year, starting July, it's been very, very difficult. Although the FAPS program has been helpful with the extra incentive, just want to know, talking on behalf of the Voiceless, what is the plan to help these families in crisis?
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you so much for the work that you do protecting women. Okay. Grace Bonilla. Grace, who runs the Human Resource Administration and does the important work with you. Where are you? There you are, left side. Okay, go ahead. What, what can we do to be supportive in helping people get to permanent housing?
Thank you for your question.
Whoop, turn that on.
Let's try. Thank you for your question and for the work that you're doing. We are in the process currently to look at all of our vouchers and streamline them, so we can make them better for providers, easier to understand for our landlords. I know that it's very difficult to also get families stabilized, so they can live permanently in the community, but we are currently working to make sure that we're having more Tier Two and more emergency housing for our domestic violence. But let's talk, and I would like to hear more about the difficulties that you're having.
Grace will follow up with you directly tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes.
Getting a microphone over there. There we go.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
I'm one of your local radio reporters, go way back.
You have a radio voice.
Well, the big million-dollar question is what you're going to do about marijuana. A lot of our youth have been railroaded from the 80s for a small portion of marijuana, some for two bags. They got 10 or 15 years. How do you plan to compensate a lot of those youth who are in jails, can't get out, and the system not seem to want to help them? So I want to know.
Thank you for the question. I want to be straightforward. The focus right now is to try and stop that from happening to anybody going forward. I want to first say that. We ended arrests for low-level possession a few years ago. We ended arrests for low-level possession a few years ago. We now, as I'm sure you've heard in the last few weeks, we are working on a plan, NYPD is coming out with a plan in the next few weeks, that will delineate ways that we can reduce arrests further and reduce disparity in enforcement, which is still a real issue.
You have a question?
I think what is going to happen soon in this state is that there will be legalization. I think that's as early as next year likely.
You have a question?
We are trying to prepare for that now. And what I've said is, I believe what we should do now is no longer arrest for public smoking, that we should be, that should be a summons, not an arrest. So, no, I hear you, I hear that part. I just want to say, the part I do have a clear answer to you for is where we are going, which I think will radically reduce the number of young people end up in that situation beginning with, because obviously summons will not put that kind of record on them and they won't be incarcerated. In terms of how we could compensate those who are already incarcerated, it's a very good question. I want to be straightforward to you. I don't have a ready answer for you. Obviously, it's something that goes beyond the city and would have to also involve the state because of the state prison system. But I think it's a fair question. We need to figure out how to make up for the mistakes of the past and we need to help people get back on their feet and get back into society. What the role of the city is, what the role of the state is, I don't have that easy answer for you, but I think you're asking a perfectly fair question. I will get you an answer. Give me a few weeks to formulate one. If you will get information, share it with my team. I will make sure we come back with an answer. Okay, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms., and after Reverend. Please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, for coming to the community.
Would you please wait a second?
Oh.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, I wanted to find out.
Get a little closer.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
Okay. I wanted to find out, what are we going to do about, we're, our house got all the parents and family members in the schools in Texas and Connecticut about the school shooting? What are we going to do about, I guess, you know, it's not close to home, but it is close to home, about our kids and I guess what you could say about mental health?
Yes.
To help the kids set them out in the schools?
Thank you. I really appreciate that question. It's on the minds of a lot of parents right now. I mean, what we saw, what we saw in Florida, what we saw in Texas was extraordinarily painful. And every parent felt it. My kids went to public school here in Brooklyn. Everyone can relate when you see those horrible images. We don't want it ever happen here. There are some things here that give us particular strength. First of all, we have the largest, by far, the largest and strongest police force in the whole country. And that makes a huge difference. And remember, in addition to 36,000 NYPD members, there's 5,000 school safety officers. And let's thank all the school safety officers who are here, by the way.
You have a question? You have a question?
So you put that together, 41,000 people who focus on protecting everyone, but the PD today, NYPD, thinks about school protection as part of its vision. It's not just those who are in the school with school safety, but it's also the precincts focused now on having a close relationship with the schools. All the things we do to stop terrorism, that same effort is applied to protect schools. So if there's any threat that emerges online or someone calls in a threat, it's treated the same way as if it was a terror threat. That's how serious it is, the same level of attention. And that follow-up makes a huge difference. But here's the part that really is crucial. The way to protect our young people is information. It really is. Too many of these tragedies, the symptoms, the signs were very, very clear. But the right people didn't always have the information. Part of why we believe in making access to mental health universal is to try and avert these kinds of tragedies. Because anyone who has a mental health challenge, if it's identified early in life, hopefully it never comes to the kind of thing that we see. So this is a moment where I want to say, a reminder to everyone that anybody, whatever kind of mental health challenge it is, it could be anxiety, it could be depression or something more serious, but whatever it is, if there's someone in your life with a mental health challenge, there's one number they can call. It's 888-NYC-WELL. And I want everyone to repeat it with me. That number, 24/7, trained counselors. And if someone says, "Look, someone in my life needs help, call that number," they will get connected to help, not just, you know, pushed off. They'll be told, "Here's how you get help. We're going to make sure you get the help you need." But also, God forbid, anyone hears of any threat against a child or against a school, that needs to be provided to NYPD or to school personnel immediately. And some of the crises have been averted because a child walked up to a police officer and told something they heard, or a parent told them something they heard, or someone was suspicious and instead of holding back that suspicion, they shared it with someone in authority so they could do something about it. So I just want everyone to know, that's so important. As New Yorkers, people tend to be able to stand up and speak up. That is one of the best ways to avoid there ever being violence in our schools, is to give our officers and our school personnel that information so they can protect everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the question. Pass. Give me one minute, please. The mayor has been talking about children. I think it is our moral responsibility of all of us. But there's a young girl. She has been raising her hand for a long time. I'm eager to listen to hear what question she's going to ask. You have a question? All right, give her the microphone, please. Let's see what she wants to ask the mayor for. What is the question?
Hello, my name is Satra. My question is, how do we make America great again?
That's clever.
Whoa!
Very good.
Whoa!
Wait, come back, come back.
Whoa!
Okay, come over here.
Whoa!
Tell me your name again.
Satra.
Satra? How you spell that?
S-A-H-T-R-A.
S-A?
H-T-R-A.
H-T-R-A? Satra. What a cool name. How old are you?
Seven.
Seven years old. You're seven years old. Wow.
Four years ago.
See? That's what pre-K does. Okay. Now, so first of all, you may be one of the youngest people to ever ask me a question at a town hall meeting. Let's give her a big round of applause. There you go. So I'm going to give you a simple answer. There are many ways that we could help America be great. I am in the school of thought that thinks there's a lot of great things about America right now. Okay? So I'm not going to say it the exact same way you said it. But how we can make America great is, I would argue, if we learned that all the people who come to this country from other places contribute to us becoming a greater country. That would be my answer to you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow. Pass, please. Microphone over here. You have a question?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, how are you?
Very, very fine, thank you, sir. My question is, what do we need to do to raise the alarm about this diabetes crisis that is in New York? You know, it's a major crisis and I applaud the First Lady's passion for mental health. But you know, we have a type three diabetes.
Yes.
Which is Alzheimer's dementia.
You're from Health Department, come on up.
And so.
Commissioner herself, come on over.
I appreciate Dr. Mary Ann Basset's performance, what she's doing. Here she is.
Here she is, you talked her up.
You need to.
You just said the word and she appeared.
You need to give her some money for this diabetes prevention program. You need to give her some.
There you go, okay. So, Dr. Basset.
And I have a flat mic. Oh, now it's coming on.
There you go.
So it's very good to see you. We're old friends, as you know. So that's why he's asking me this question.
It's okay, well, he's your lobbyist, it's okay.
The, you're right, diabetes is a huge problem. A big part of our goal in tackling diabetes is to try and prevent it from occurring in the first place. And that's achieved by ensuring that people have access to healthy food. We've done a lot of work on that and some of it's policy work. Calorie posting is going to be up, not only in restaurants and food service establishments, but in supermarkets, convenience stores. And this city is actually already enforcing it. It's federal, federal law. So we went to court for that and we continue to fight on that front. But it's in the top 10 causes of death and rising and I appreciate you pointing out how important it is. Thank you.
So thank you. And I want to say on the calorie counts, I want to commend Dr. Basset and the Health Department have really led the way here. So everybody, I want to, I want to survey the room. How many of you have been at a fast food establishment or another establishment and you looked at the calorie counts and it ruined your whole day looking at? I, I was at Nathan's on Friday because we were getting ready to open up the beach season and I would just innocently wanted some french fries and I looked at that calorie count and I was like, now I can't eat them. Now it's not, it's not going to be any fun anymore. So the truth is, Dr. Basset's very happy about that. The truth is that that actually helps us to be aware of how many calories we're taking in and it's part of how we protect our health. So I want to ask everyone, please, encourage people to pay attention to those calorie counts and to act accordingly because it makes a huge difference in protecting themselves. Now, we have been joined by a dignitary, a dignitary, all the way. Wait, you know what, Yvette, what you're supposed to say is, "I just flew in from Washington DC and boy, are my arms tired." So I want to give you a chance to jump in if you'd like, our Congresswoman, Yvette Clark.
Wow, I really didn't expect this. Let me, first of all, acknowledge our Councilman, Councilman Eugene, our Assemblywoman, Rodney Schatz, and all of the dignitaries that are here present, as well as the beloved community. Isn't it great to have our mayor right here in the heart of our community? To answer our questions, to make sure that all the challenges that we face can be faced together? And to have his team. I mean, look at all of the commissioners that are here as well. Let's give them a round of applause because they do the heavy lifting. And just to say to Councilman Eugene, this is a good thing that you have done, bringing our mayor to the community. There's so much that challenges us here in this community and it's at the local level where a lot of that gets addressed. I wish we, I could say that we were doing more in Washington DC, but you know, so-and-so is running the White House right now. But we're in the battle, we're in the fight. I think that things will change if we engage, we do what we must do to go out and vote. Hello, I'm not telling you who to vote for, but you know. What I am telling you to do is to go out and vote. It is an imperative. If we're going to really demonstrate our power and the fact that we need immediate change, when you look at what's happening with immigration right now, families are being separated. When you look at what is happening in terms of the Muslim ban, families are being separated. When you look at the battle we had last week just to save food stamps, they want to take the food out of the mouth of the most vulnerable in our community. You know it is time for us to have some righteous indignation and get out there and vote. And I know that our mayor is 100% with us in the battle, in the trenches, but the city of New York is well in hand. It's a sanctuary city and we're blessed to have that here. So thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Which section? Which section?
Now, we got to go back this way.
Okay, we're coming around, we're coming around.
All right. But...
Go ahead, choose.
All right, sir. Okay, he has been raising his hand for a long time.
Okay. Microphone.
For a long time.
Now he asked me to speak for him, now.
No, no, no.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think this gentleman said he would like to thank you for standing for not letting ICE get in everybody's home and pick up people in New York City as a safe city.
Thank you.
So he wants to say thank you. And what we've been discussing, Mayor, I want to say thank you to you. As a parent, we talk about education, we talk about pre-K, thank you. As a mother of four, I benefit greatly from specialized high school. Now, getting to specialized high school, no one has ever touched that. It's only 5% of our children, minority children, are in specialized high school. So now, being the mayor that you are, and I say thank you for that, and I want to know what are we, I've been a volunteer mom with your, with the Department of Education.
Yep.
And I see some great educator in the room, Ruben? Yes, I'm going to acknowledge you. I've been fighting for education, yes, and I thank you for that. And I want to know, what are we doing in term, Department of Education, to push it even more for our kids to increase the number? Because I benefit big time for all my four children from specialized high school to special, I mean specialized middle school. And when those children finish, guaranteed to go to the best colleges around the world.
Thank you.
And my children accepted not only in this United States, but even in England and everywhere else. So I want to thank you for taking that on and I'm with you. I've been volunteer wherever they need me, I'm here.
Thank you, Mercedes.
Because as a parent, I'm here to support.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, the, hold on, hold on.
I'm coming. Give me a minute.
Hold on, everyone. The quick answer, the quick answer to the point that Mercedes raised, which is that our specialized high schools, which are some of the best high schools in this city and some of the best high schools in the country, they're wonderful, but they do not reflect this whole city. And they need to. And we are going to be presenting some plans very soon to make sure there's greater fairness because it does not make sense. Look, you look about this whole society, it's supposed to be based on fairness. And you can't have some of the institutions that provide the best opportunity that effectively are closed off to a huge swath of our community. It's just not acceptable. And this is a city where more than half the people are African-American or Latino. And yet, the representation of specialized high schools come nowhere near that. So we have some very distinct ideas, which I'll be putting forward soon, on how to make that more fair and more inclusive. The other thing I want to say is, we're trying to create more and better options in schools for all families, every background, every neighborhood. We are investing a lot in our schools and you're going to see, I think, in the next few years, the school system in general provide a lot more strong options for families of all backgrounds and that's in everyone's interest.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Sir? Microphone over here, please.
Thank you. This Saturday, 50 New York City public schools are bringing 1,500 boxes of school supplies, clothing to a container that's going to Syrian refugees living in Jordan.
Wow.
And it's an amazing project and we want to expand it. So we want to expand it to 100 schools and to other cities. It's a process where each school collects 30 boxes of one thing, 50 schools, 1,500 boxes, we can fill a container. United Muslim Relief is shipping it for free. There's no money. So if we get together, we can go to Bangladesh, we can go to South Yemen, and it helps our kids in the city understanding what the Muslim problem is and how they're treated and they have empathy and they give. So I'm asking, how do we expand this across the city and to other cities in New York State?
I really appreciate what you're doing. Give him a round of applause. I'm going to ask our Office of Immigrant Affairs to work with you. This is something, I'm going to work with Department of Education, obviously, as well because it's a very noble effort. And I agree with you, it's both helping children on other places, but it's also teaching everyone here how to think together and how to be united. So I really want to thank you for that. And Bita will follow up with you and will help you out. Thank you.
Sir? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Eugene. Thank you, Councilman Eugene. My name is Wiss Blod Termidor, and I'm one of the Brooklyn ambassadors. Einstein says, "Problems cannot be solved with the same mindset that created them."
Ah, that's a good one.
Interesting.
That's a good one.
I'm one of those that believe strongly that the solution lies in the hearts and the mind of young people.
Okay.
I've been privileged to see both, being at prominent institutions that have the wealth and the resources for innovation. I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, what are some of the opportunities that the mayor's office have available for underserved communities? Too many questions, great questions have been asked, that you provide a solution, but we also can help you.
Yes.
In solving problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I think, look, we see it all over the city, that, speaking from the perspective of young people. I think what we had to do on a city level was provide that level playing field I talked about earlier of giving all children early childhood education, giving all children more after-school opportunities. But I have to say, it's working because so many community partners have come forward. So I would argue to, in the spirit of your question, that, one, we need more and more community partners to step forward to help us because we're not only doing pre-K, we're going to do 3K. I mentioned to pull off early childhood education for 60,000 or 70,000 three-year-olds each year. We're going to need a lot of community partners to help us. I mentioned the after-school, that can expand further. We already have a huge, I think it's about 110,000 middle school kids are going to after-school, but we can take a lot more if we have more partners and more kids who are recruited in. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for community members and community leaders to help us nurture our young people and to come forward and help us to get that done. And my team will follow up with you because we'd love your help doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. With your permission, we know that we got a great institution, medical institution in our community, hospital like Downstate Medical Center and also Kings County. I want to take the opportunity to recognize the president of Kings County now, Mr. McLoughlin. Would you please sign up? Thank you. Thank you. Miss? Yes. Microphone over here, please.
Go ahead, thank you. Okay, okay, we're trying to listen to the question, go ahead.
As you know me as a gardener, but I also am a very involved with community open space in Rodney's, Assemblymember Rodney's district. And for 24 years, we have been fighting for funding for a schoolyard to be renovated and just succeeded in the last year and a half in securing 1.9 million after a lot of sweat equity. I preface this question based on this information in that the Flatbush community is really eager to use this new schoolyard, which will be built next year. We work closely with the schools and the community. It was a community-led effort. And our concern is, and our question, is that schoolyards are really integral, important places for recreation and play for children, and you know very well how you've helped fund schoolyards in our district. Thank you. But what we found is that the actual access to schoolyard space for recreation and important schoolyard gardening, which is really a part of plant science training for our children...
Give me a punchline.
Yep, is that they are often not, they're locked on the weekends after school, and there are four different designated types of schoolyard space, different jurisdictions. Custodians sometimes keep them open. So my question is, could we have, or is there a discussion to perhaps look at how schoolyards are used so that they can be accessible equally in all neighborhoods?
Yep.
For, so we can really spend money and make sure children get to use them.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thanks for what you're doing with the garden, that's wonderful. Yes, this is a really good issue. So I think what we have right now is not the most coherent policy about how we make schoolyards available to the community. There are some real challenges, and my colleagues at NYPD will be the first to say, we have to first think about safety in each instance. If you're talking about after hours or on weekends, we have to make sure that we feel the environment will be secure, and there has to be personnel available to open and close and make sure things are clean and all that. But I think that is a surmountable challenge. We do not have, as best I understand, a single unified policy around the city. And I'm looking at Dorita, I think then, school construction, I think that's right. Melanie's here, I think that's right, that we don't have a single policy that sort of... Right, but we don't have a sort of vision for how we want to use the space that animates that. So I'm glad you raised it because I think it's one of the things that we need to figure out how to do because that space being used is good for everyone, so long as we can handle it right, so long as we can keep it safe. And so my team will follow up with you, but you're also helping to inspire what will hopefully be a bigger approach so we can really maximize those spaces for communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I call the next person, we have been joined by our district leader, Josie Pierre. She has been raising the hand for a long time, would you please? And after that, I'm going back to the other side, right? All right. Please. Oh, this side, right? You're right. I'm coming to you. All right, miss, please.
Okay, since my English is not good, I'm going to make a question in Spanish.
I'm sorry? Go ahead.
Okay, just please.
I need a translator.
But everyone, try and do your question quick. We've got a lot of people waiting, so go ahead, but do it quick.
I need a translator.
Yep, translator's coming.
All right.
First of all, buenas noches a todos. Es para mí un honor estar aquí esta noche y poder dar las gracias al Mayor de Blasio por el programa de los niños para tres años. Mi hijo se vio beneficiado y pudo ahorrarme 800 dólares mensuales que puedo utilizar ahora en el hogar.
First of all, I want to, first of all, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity. Hello to everybody, and I want to say thank you to Mayor Bolde Blasio for the program that he has for the three-years-olds. My son has been, has received help through that program, and I was able to save $800 because of that program.
Per month, per month.
Ahora mi pregunta es, tiene mente poner más programas para el verano, campamentos de verano para familias de bajo recursos?
And my question is, if you are planning to expand and have more programs like this one for summer camps?
Thank you very much for the question. The answer is, we like the idea, but I also want to be honest, we don't actually have the money right now to afford that. It's a discussion we're having with the city council about whether they want to take some of the resources they have available and focus on that. So right now, unfortunately, no, we do not have additional money for summer camp programs, but the city council is working with us to see if they want to make that a priority, and that might be able to provide for some. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor. Miss, a young person, yes?
Oh, wow. Hi. Hello, okay. Sorry, I didn't think I was actually going to get to ask this question.
Go ahead.
So I grew up in New York, and I went to school, actually, with your son. I went to Brooklyn Tech.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So, yeah.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you so much. I'm in college now. Anyways, I just wanted to ask a similar question to what she brought up earlier and what she brought up earlier, which was about, you know, guns and things like that. So my question is, within a school, how is it possible, especially since certain people aren't educated about mental health issues, to know the difference between someone that is angry or just having a bad day and someone that, you know, something a lot more terrible is happening in their life, and they are a threat to, you know, violence, especially like within a school system?
No, that's a great question, I appreciate that. And I'll go give my own layman's answer, and Deputy Chancellor might want to give a more educated answer, but real quick, I think the thing we're doing wrong as a society is, of course, we stigmatize mental health conditions so people feel somehow embarrassed to talk about it. You know, my wife has made a major, major focus on ending that kind of negative feeling about mental health and getting people to be open about it. But even when she speaks about it to a room like this, people come up to her, and they want to talk to her, and they want to talk to her about their family, and they start whispering because they're feeling some sense of shame that they should not feel. So the destigmatization has to happen across the board. But to your specific question, I think that giving the benefit of the doubt that if someone is feeling troubled, it might indicate something bigger, and it's better that they get an opportunity to talk to someone. It never hurts to talk to a trained counselor. It never hurts to encourage someone to talk to a counselor. It may turn out it was just a bad day, but better that they seek a little too much help than too little. And I think every one of us has an opportunity to say to someone, hey, if you're feeling that way, why don't you talk to someone? And it's available, you just have to call this number, and you can get the help. Dorita, you want to?
That is correct, and I just wanted to just let everyone know that we do have a program in New York City called Social Emotional Learning, and we're expanding it every single day, and all of our superintendents have been trained, and a lot of our principals have been trained, and we're trying to train our teachers so that they can be aware of what's happening and to look for signs. The other thing is that we have more guidance counselors than we've ever had before. We have social workers, we have the Single Shepherd Program that are not only speaking to students, but also speaking to parents. So the communication part is very important, and I'm happy that you asked that question tonight because we do recognize that, and we want to continue this happening.
Yes, yes, and we could use your help because we need a new generation of leaders to help spread this idea and connect their peers. And in fact, peer counseling is a really big piece of this. So if you want to be not only someone who spreads the message, but directly helping people, we need folks who are ready to do that. So we'll follow up with you. Thank you.
Miss?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor. My regards, everyone. My question is back to the whole education thing. As we all know, parents are one of the, if not the, most important partner in a child's education, and the new chancellor has announced that he'll be focusing on that. My question to you is, what is your vision for parent involvement?
Great question. Thank you very, very much for that because I have a different way of saying it. And again, I'm a very proud parent of two kids who went through New York City Public Schools the whole way through, and I say, parents are the first and last teachers of their children. We set the foundation, and we make sure that child remembers those lessons throughout their lives. So I actually think parents are the most important piece of the equation when things are done right. But you are raising a very important question, have we done things right? And the answer, honestly, for years and years, has been no. The underlying idea in our school system was not to see parents as allies and strategic partners. So one of the most important things we did, it got very little attention, but it's actually literally one of the most important things we did in terms of education, was we changed the way a teacher's work week goes so that every week, they have mandated time, designated time, to relate to parents. It used to be there were the two parent-teacher conferences a year, and for a lot of parents, that's the only time they had any interaction with a teacher, which meant the parent was not being empowered to how to help their kid best. We now have weekly where teachers are supposed to connect with any parents who need to have that dialogue. We have four parent-teacher conferences a year now, and that much greater connection, I think, leads to a lot. But what I think of as the parent role, it begins with the parent knowing everything they need to know to help their kid and supporting their kid, making sure they're reading, making sure they're doing homework, doing things with them that will encourage their growth and development. And then in terms of school, I would like to see a lot more parental involvement in the school. I think it holds everyone accountable. I think it helps improve the school's community. And then right on up to more parents getting involved with our Community Education Council to help us make some of the bigger decisions for their school district. So our vision, and the chancellor, you're right, is very passionate about this, is a much higher level of parent involvement. We think that will make our school system stronger. Thank you.
Now, I want to have a question over here, miss. You have been raising your hand for a long time.
Thank you very much. I would like to know, is there...
Go ahead, go ahead, come on.
Is there any plan for homeowner to freeze the property taxes, escrow, and insurance?
Okay, thank you.
To stay in New York?
So, thank you very much for the question. So on property taxes, we're about to name a commission that will try to come up with more fairness in our property tax system. Right now, property taxes are very unclear how the system works. Different neighborhoods seem to be treated different ways. We want to try and rectify that and create a single, consistent property tax system. That's something I think is going to make a big impact on people's lives, and that's going to be starting very soon. But we also want to make sure that people are treated fairly, and anyone who feels that their property taxes were not handled fairly, we want to know about, we want to talk to Department of Finance, we may be able to help in certain circumstances. But really, what we need is big structural change, and that's what our commission will be working on.
Sir, please.
Just want to thank you so much, Mayor de Blasio, for your work, what you're doing, for your presence here, is an impact on our community, for our councilman here, who is really doing a wonderful job, and for all those who are here this evening. I retired from the Department of Education about two years ago. I worked for 26 years in the Department of Education. Way back in 1991, I worked in a school where there were shootings and stuff like that. Thank God it isn't that much because we had, within a four-month period, we had one, three students shot and one teacher was shot. That's the Thomas Jefferson High School, it's closed down now. But I want to say something, it's because I have a burden. We had a school where there were instruments locked up in a vault, musical instrument. I have found that the arts are not highlighted in schools as it should be. My wife and I have a music school.
Okay, I need, I wanted to stop you because we're really running out of time, I've got this many people, so give me your question or...
Yeah, my question is, how can we, how can we bring back authenticity in the education, which connects the school to the real world? The music, the arts, also the woodwork, and we're talking about...
I got you, I got you.
You know, domestic science.
You got, you got a 12-part question there, okay. First of all, thank you for all you did for our young people when you worked for Department of Education. Thank you very much for that. I'm going to keep it on the question of arts education, very simply. This is a big deal. When young people get exposed to arts and culture, it is not just about learning arts and culture, it often is inspiring to them. It often is the thing that sparks their intellectual curiosity, their connection to their studies in general, their sense of motivation. So we, in this administration, working with the city council, we added $23 million a year for arts education to allow us to bring in hundreds of educators so we could actually have arts education and cultural education be much more widespread. And the after-school program, I'm going to keep promoting after-school because, again, when our middle school kids get after-school and it's free, a lot of time that comes with a cultural component that enriches them further. So we are making some very big investments in arts and culture education. I think there's a huge positive benefit there. We're going to keep doing that. I think it's one of the things that actually helps kids to learn the best. So we are making a much bigger investment than in the past.
There's another young person who wants to ask a question. Can we give her the microphone, please?
Hello, my name is Emmyette Jones, and I'm a middle school student at MSAP, Middle School for Art and Philosophy. And like the teachers from the Board of Education said about arts and culture, my school, even though it's supposed to have arts, it doesn't have, it doesn't actually promote art in the school, like it only does academics. And our principal, they only do, they only do academics. So I'm just wondering, how can we like fight for arts in my school?
What a great question.
I'm in District 18.
Okay, now wait, tell me your name again.
Emmyette Jones.
And which school again?
MSAP, Middle School for Art and Philosophy, and I'm also a graduate from PSX.
All right, there you go. Okay. All right. There you go. Okay. So first of all, first of all, young lady, you are very poised and very well spoken. Let's give her a round of applause for that. And you're going to show how much power and how much influence you have because the Deputy Chancellor is going to talk to you. Because we want to see every school that possibly can have that arts and culture program. And we like academics too. I just want to give a shout out to academics. That's good too. But we definitely want to see well-rounded kids. So at the end of the meeting in a little bit, go meet the Deputy Chancellor. Then I think you should go into school tomorrow. And you should just wander by the principal's office. And then you should get the principal's attention and say, oh, you know, I happen to be talking to the Deputy Chancellor. And she said, that's right. That's right. All right. We're going to get our teacher. I like that. So follow up right after, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I call the next person, I said at the beginning, Norman is an island. We work as a team. I just want to acknowledge and to recognize my colleague in the city council, Councilmember Andrade.
We're at the end. It's okay.
Now, the next question, please. No, she has been raising the hand for a long time.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure serving you. I've always campaigned for you. My problem today is that I own a small business. I own a home healthcare agency in Bed-Stuy, and the name is Sweet Sunshine. I was so happy when I saw that Karki sent me an ad that you were willing to help small business owners. I called them up. I got all of my information, send it in to them. And we kept in contact. But what turned me off is that one of the ladies said to me, you know, you have a negative balance on your taxes. I said, yes. I am looking for a loan, a small business loan, that I can able to keep paying my employees. Because I have 12 employees. They look for that check every two weeks. The managed care company takes four weeks.
Okay, let me take your, thank you very much. Our Small Business Services Commissioner, Greg Bishop, is going to follow up with you directly. Obviously, you're right. If a small business, we want small businesses to succeed. We want them to employ community residents. Sometimes, like all the rest of us, there's times when any business might struggle a bit. Our job is to help in every way we can. So you will get direct support from the commissioner. He'll follow up with you. Let me just say, everyone, we got 15 minutes left.
How many questions?
So we can get a lot of questions. If everyone gets right to the question, I'll give you a quick answer. Let's see how many we can do. Go.
Just question, sir. Quick.
Let's see. Fat lightning round. Just get to the punchline.
Will you take the lead, will you take the lead to repeal all legislation that supports abortion, the slaughter of children? New York City leads the nation in the murder of children.
Okay, I respect you. First of all, thank you for asking a quick question during our lightning round. We have a difference of opinion and philosophy, but we can respect each other. I believe in the right to choose. I respect those who feel differently. But my job, and I believe it is my job, is to defend the right to choose.
All right. Just question. Yes, sir. Yes. Just question. Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
All right.
Okay, quick question.
Okay, quick question. I applaud you for your obsession in addressing the affordable housing.
Thank you.
But at the same time, sir, I must get on your case.
Yes.
Regarding, you know, it's destroying the character of the communities in doing so. When you have a 40, I mean, 18-story building in a seven-story area, where at one time I could look down the street from my porch, can't do that anymore. What I'm getting at is, I think this should be shared among all of the communities.
Okay, thank you. I get your point. And I appreciate it. Very quick. First of all, I liked the way you said it, my obsession with affordable housing. That's a good obsession. So a noble obsession. But you make a very good point. Look, we are, first of all, I am devoted to making sure that affordable housing is built in every kind of community. And every kind of community also shoulders some of the burdens and challenges that we have as a city as a whole. And we are going to do that for sure. On the question of height, I want to say this. I believe we need affordable housing very badly. And sometimes that means height to achieve it. But to be fair, we should not be creating a situation that's so discordant, so out of touch with what's happening around it, that it throws off the community. So it's always a bit of fine tuning. So we got to strike that balance. And just to give you the answer, I am sensitive to that. I'm always going to try and make sure we do strike that balance. So thank you.
One question over here, and I'm going to the other side. Please, quick.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor. So your citizens is being evicted from those private homes. And I would like to know what program is in place for them?
Yes. Anybody who's facing eviction, we will connect to legal help. If it's an illegal eviction, we are often able to stop it because of giving legal help. And then if someone, unfortunately, that can't be stopped, there are cases where we could provide rent subsidy or something else to help people either stay or get a different apartment. So I'll have, if you know someone who needs it, I'll have my team follow up with you.
Thank you so much.
Microphone over here. Gentleman has been raising hand for a long time. Please. Yes.
Scan the microphone.
All right, all right, all right, all right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Look, he's a man with a collar. Let's, let's respect our clergy.
Thank you. My observation in helping throughout the community, I find out that there's not enough help for especially mothers and children with mental health.
Yes.
And I applaud every mother or parents that have children with special, with that kind of help that they need. In the, going to the hospital with parents like that, I see that there was no help in the hospital. And when, particularly when the parents have to stay in the hospital with their children, the doctors cannot handle them. And I need to know, is there a special unit or an hospital that take care of this kind of case? Because it's very urgent and very needed.
Okay, so Reverend, the, what we're trying to do is if anyone has a mental health need, again, they can call into our one hotline, 888-NYC-WELL, and get help of many different kinds, including if they have a situation, for example, where they need help in terms of a hospital, or whatever it might be. We've tried to make a single unified point of contact to get people help. If there is a specific hospital that you think there's a challenge with, I'd like my staff to talk to you about that and see if we can rectify that directly. I think the broad answer is, anyone who has a mental health challenge for their family, call that number. If it is special education in terms of our schools, we've tried to make that a lot easier for parents. That's a separate thing. But if it's a mental health issue, going through that hotline is the best way. Thank you.
Sir, very quick question, please. He has been asking for a long time. Go ahead.
Good evening. How you doing, Mr. Mayor? My question is something that a lot of people in my community asks me. There's a lot of facilities that have mental health patients.
Yes.
And what's happening is that the timing of where, I guess, the mental health patient's supposed to be inside the facilities, they're not. So people are being harassed. There's a lot of women that's very afraid, you know, parents and children that's afraid. And people have been attacked by a lot of the mental health patients. So it's fallen on, and I'm not saying on NYPD, and I think also when the calls come in, it's not being called in properly. So the interaction as far as with NYPD and also the mental health patients in the community is very confusing.
Yep.
And it needs to be actually like put in a better place. So I'm just wondering, what is it that, you know, that you can actually like, you know, or have your commissioners that's in charge in that area that can help the community as far as like a safety perspective with these facilities that's allowing mental health patients to actually roam around and hours and parts of the days when they shouldn't harass?
Okay, that's very, very good question. Okay. Hold on, hold on. So very quick. I want to emphasize, I really appreciate this question. I know it's being asked with a whole heart. I want to emphasize that people who have a mental health challenge, which is a huge percent of our whole community, the number in this country is one in five Americans has some kind of mental health challenge. So it's not just a small group of people. And it's certainly not typically a group of people who are aggressive or violent. That's very rare, actually. But to get to the core of your question, two simple points. In terms of any facility where there's a feeling that, that the folks from the facility are having a negative situation with the community, this is where NYPD, through neighborhood policing, can play a very important role. Because it's not the old approach to NYPD. This is a very direct communicative approach where if there's a quality of life problem in the community, a neighborhood coordinating officer can directly get, who's going to be around the community for a long time, not just in and out of the community, but an ongoing basis, can go and work with that facility to figure out what it's going to take to create a better environment. So that's my first point. The second point is, which I think you indicated, we don't want a situation where our police officers are trying to do the work of mental health professionals. That's not what they should have to do. Now, sometimes they do because there's no other choice. But what we want to do is get people with a mental health challenge to professional help as quickly as possible. So it does not end up manifesting as the kind of problem that might end up with police intervention. We can help our officers. We can help our families if people just pick up the phone and connect to the mental health services that are available. There have been many instances, and we've all read about them, tragedies. And what I always want to take from that is, we have to help every family know that they can get help for free, readily available. And if they think their family member could use that help, that's the first thing to do. Not wait for, God forbid, it to get worse. So again, that 888-NYC-WELL makes a huge difference.
Thank you, Mr. Miss over there. Yes, please.
Thank you. I'm Ms. Duncan. I'm from Corporation Council. But I'm going to turn the mic over to Trish O'Connor. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Trish O'Connor. I'm the Chair of Housing for Community Board 17. And I also teach real estate at Medgarvis College. One of the questions that we have all the time is that the people, the homeowners who've owned their homes 30, 40, 50, 60 years are being harassed day in and day out. Senior citizens are getting phone calls on their cell phones. We want to buy your house. We want to buy your house. We want to buy all cash. It's a lot of scams. There's a lot of fraud. People are coming with fake contracts. Their, I mean, their homes are worth $800,000, $900,000, and they'll be giving contracts for $100,000. People are giving them lawyers.
Got it.
I mean, is enough is enough. And you may have an answer, but on the Department of State, I sit on the Department of State Board. I'm the youngest and the only person of color to sit on the Department of State Board. And I'm going to tell you, the cease and the ceaseless, we need it on a city level. We need it where these homeowners can, I mean, right now, NHS has a sign up.
I got you. I got you. Thank you very, very much. So this is, I'm really glad you raised it because this is the area where I want to see us do more. We have to figure out how to do a very energetic outreach to seniors in particular, but not just seniors. Because this is happening in a lot of places where there's this effort to scam homeowners. And usually, if the offer is too good to be true, it's because it's too good to be true, right? We got to stop it. So one is, the city has to figure out how to do a better outreach to warn people to not believe these scams, to know what their rights are, to protect their rights and their, and their property. Second, again, everyone in this room has a lot of reach, a lot of involvement in the community, spreading this word that to everyone you know who might be vulnerable to this effort to get their property away from them, that the answer should be no. You know, start with a no. Maybe in some cases, the offer ultimately might make sense. But start with a no and protect your rights and get legal help, including from places like legal aid and community-based legal services. Now, the sheriff is standing here, which means the sheriff has another specific idea. Go ahead, Sheriff.
The sheriff's department investigates this type of activity. It's also known as deed fraud. So you have people that go around looking to acquire real property, particularly in Brooklyn, particularly in this neighborhood. And they're looking to acquire real property. They're looking to take advantage of particularly the elderly. Sometimes individuals have already started getting involved in the, in the scenario, and they don't know what to do. So the sheriff's department, you can reach out to us. We have investigators assigned to this. If it's a very aggressive type of push, we can look at it to see if it's following a certain type of pattern. So if you like, I'll, I'll give you some information off to the side. And if you have anybody that, that is experiencing this, please let us know.
Hold on. I want to do one more thing. Sheriff, if anybody in this audience knows of such a situation, what is the go-to place for them to turn to? Can they call 311? What do they do?
They can call 311. They can call the sheriff's department directly. And then you can also go online. We have an internet complaint line, and you can make a complaint with the sheriff's department.
Okay, so stay there one more second. You didn't even know you had a sheriff, did you?
Yeah.
Okay. You have a sheriff. I mean, look at this. Okay, look at that. Says, says sheriff right there. These guys over here are like, who the hell's this guy?
The two oldest city officers in New York City, the mayor and the sheriff.
Sheriff, yes. Okay. Okay, we really respect NYPD, but I think he just put them in their place there. Okay, sheriff first. So the, let's be clear about the sheriff's office. If someone calls 311 and says, I am a victim of this kind of fraud, or I know someone's a victim of this kind of fraud, 311 will get that report to you?
Yes.
Okay, so everyone, so again, excellent, excellent question, but as simple as calling 311 if you think someone's trying to defraud a homeowner. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you very much. The microphone over here, please.
I want to know, like, what can we do to make the community better that I live in? I live over there on Tilden and Ostron. And it's hard. Like, I'm so scared, like, when I get off of work at night with my kids to walk home to go in the house, because it's too many criminal interactions over there, especially inside of my building, where anyone could just walk in the building, smoke, hang out, have gang meetings in the back, in the stairways, on my floor. Not too long ago, like two months ago, it was a shootout, like in front of my building. Like, management knows about it, and they're not doing anything about it. And there's kids.
No, and I, we don't want to see that at all. So tell me again, where, where is the building?
It's Tilden and Ostron.
Tilden and Ostron. Which precinct? Okay, okay. Very, the crowd knows their precincts. Okay, hold on. Come on over. So, so to your question, everyone's, everyone's agitated about that. To your question. All right, everybody, come back. Come back. First of all, I want to thank you because, and let's, everyone listen to this. The way she started her question, even though she is feeling the effects of something very negative, she said, I want to know how I can help my community. Let's thank her for that. So I would like you to get involved with the precinct through the precinct community council and other ways, because your leadership and your voice could help the police to do their job and support you and your neighbors better. So go ahead, talk about what we can do to help immediately.
So I'm going to tell you what we've done. We deploy our overtime resources on Ostron. I know exactly the area you're talking about. We have plainclothes officers in that area also to address the gang issues. After this meeting, you come to me. I'll get the NCOs out to you. And your specific area, if there's like a specific location that you want addressed, we will address it. Okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, everybody, we have time for five more, five more questions.
Very quick.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Use your judgment.
Gentlemen, you have been raising your hand for a long time. No, over there.
There you go.
No, 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 no. The gentleman in the back. Hello. How are you?
Pass, pass. Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Quick question.
Yes, I, I'm going to blow your mind with something too, sir.
Okay.
Very quick.
I realized there was no one speak about sports.
Yes.
And I'm in cricket. And I just want to read this quickly to you, sir, which we would like to have in your city here. The sports of cricket has been rapidly growing in New York City across the USA. Data shows that over
Hey, what's the punch? Just go right to the question.
Over 15,000.
I know cricket is growing in this country. Lots of, see, you're just going to tell me. So what's the question?
What we are looking for, sir, is for a stadium to be built in Brooklyn.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa. Wait.
Okay.
So, so
That's not for us, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Hold on. Okay, now, I've had people, I've had people ask me, ask me for a street Okay, now, I've had people, I've had people ask me, ask me for a street sign or a stop sign, or can you fix my parking ticket? You are the first person to ever ask me for a stadium. I know. So, what we will do, hold on, hold on. What we will do is have the Parks Department, our Borough Director Marty Marr follow-up. I don't know if we can get you a stadium, but we might be able to get you more capacity, more fields, more opportunity for cricket. Now, I'm gonna hold the count, that was one out of five, but I'm gonna make a special dispensation because this guy had the microphone in his hand and then it was taken away for good reason because there was a misunderstanding. Let's get the microphone to that gentleman right there in the sweater.
All right.
And then we will do four more after him. Go ahead, sir. And just give me the punchline of the question.
Okay, good evening and thank you. I have a very specific question. What policies will you implement to eradicate the apartheid system of education which currently exists in New York City schools?
Okay. I thank you for the question. I'm not going to, respectfully, I don't believe it's an apartheid system of education, but I do believe it's still not as fair and equal as it needs to be. And again, as I said at the beginning, I think it's a remaking of the school system from its foundation, which begins with early childhood education because the absence of early childhood education effectively created inequality from the very beginning. Having it across the board, heavy focus on 3K, pre-K, and getting kids to reading on grade level by third grade, I think that's the great equalizer. But then it is also other steps, like advanced placement courses for all. Let's be very blunt about the fact, just like we talked about the specialized schools, we also had advanced placement was in some high schools, not at all in others according to zip code and demographics. We now have a mandate that every high school will have advanced placement courses. We're gonna open up access to those specialized schools on a more even basis. These are all part of a bigger solution and I wanna see our educational workforce reflect our student body more. So, one of many initiatives that we have, this one's under Deputy Mayor Thompson, is to hire 1,000 male teachers of color to have more representation in the classroom. So, those are some of the things we will do. Four more, four more.
Lady over here, please.
Yes. But-
Hey, hold on, everyone. Hold on.
No, no, that's, that's-
Hey, who's got it?
I have my question with a lady with a paper, where is the lady?
That's her, that's her.
No, no, no.
No, she-
Okay.
All right, so, let me take a young person over here.
Okay, here we go.
Where's the young person I've been asking?
We got a microphone.
Young person.
I am-
Hold on, hold on.
Hello?
We're coming over here. You'll sort that out there.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, you are up.
Okay, so-
What's your name?
Hi, I'm Kayla Parker, um-
Say again?
I'm Kayla Parker.
Kayla?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I run track and field for 67 precinct for NYPD Falcons with Officer Barry and we practice at Betsy Head Park in Brownsville and I wanted to know if you could renovate that track so that my team could have a safe place to run.
Very nice, thank you. X, first of all, thank-
We have-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're gonna, you're gonna get to come in, hold on, slow down. Okay, this young lady, Kayla, Kayla asked a very important question about Betsy Head Park, was it? Okay, and that your track team practices there and you represent the 67 precinct and you have very stylish shirts. I'm very impressed. Okay, this is our Borough Director for Parks, Marty Marr. What can we tell her about that park?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you funded $30 million for Betsy Head in the Anchor Parks Program. It is in design. We are gonna have a track made of mondo, that's what the Olympics are played on, a brand-new field for multi-sports, brand-new basketball, and then the whole other side of the park, all of Betsy Head Park from one end to the other, not the pool, is being renovated for $30 million, we're about a year, year and a half away from construction. This guy here, first time in my 34 years we've had that kinda money for a park.
All right, good. Thank you for your question. Okay, we've got three more.
Three more, we have a question. Hold on, hold on, hold on. He's gonna trust it because it's-
Okay, good. Go ahead, sir.
I have been in housing court against my landlord for over two years. Any resolution now because it's taking too long, judge wants to close case. I have an attorney, but I'm not very knowledgeable. What can I do to get the help I need?
Okay, so, we're gonna follow-up. Steve Banks, you'll see her afterwards, okay. Ma'am, and you'll be the translator. This is Commissioner Steve Banks, he will see you right after to get you the help you need. Thank you. Okay. We got two more, right? Two more. You, hold on, do this one first.
Good evening. Hi.
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, the opioid epidemic is taking New York State by storm, as you know.
The what is, I'm sorry?
The opioid epidemic.
Opioid, yes.
You know, there's a crisis in New York and there's also an influx of clients coming from the suburbs to Brooklyn.
Yes.
Is there a possibility that you could look into expanding the services that we're now providing in the opioid treatment programs?
Yes, absolutely. And look, the opioid crisis, I mean, this is very painful, the number of lives we're losing is absolutely unacceptable. I wanna give a lot of thanks and credit to NYPD that has been doing some extraordinary work to help turn the tide on this crisis. We do see, thank God, more lives being saved than ever before because NYPD and FDNY and all of our services that are first responders have naloxone now so they can reverse the overdoses. But you're exactly right, the crucial element is treatment.